All right, we call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, March 19th. To order, if I could ask everyone to please stand and recite the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of the 128 School Board and Administration are seated-
Here.
Zach Hurdy.
Here.
Kevin Huber.
Here.
Scott Luth.
Here.
Karen Lundstedt.
Here.
Lauren Mauer.
Here.
Mac Thurman.
Here. All right, so we know Emily Mauer is absent, although we do expect her to join later. In her absence, Karen and I appoint you secretary for that. Thank you. Okay, the agenda tonight fairly straightforward. We will open it up for public comment if there's anybody who'd like to speak. We'll have the student school board representatives speak. Rather extensive superintendent's report. We'll vote on the consent vote agenda, which we reviewed last week in committee. Brief update from program and personnel and facilities and finance. Nothing from property, Scott, I believe?
That'd be your correct.
Okay, and Seedall? Nothing? Okay, Jim IASB?
I'll do a brief recap of what we did last.
Okay, and then we will have an executive session tonight to review collective negotiating matters. Five aisle CS 120/2 seat two. We will not be taking any action after that session this evening. Anything else? All right, so we will open up the public comment. Anybody wishing to speak? Nope? Okay, then we'll go right to our school board representatives.
VHHS Student School Board Representative Kelsey Carino.
Okay, so, this past week Stevenson came over to the high school, last Wednesday, because we're having a combined choir orchestra concert on April 8th, along with a professional choir named Core Cantiano. And so, we were able to rehearse all the pieces that we were singing. We're singing an entire mass written by Josef Heiden. So it was cool to meet other students from Stevenson that were all singing the same thing and kind of singing in that bigger group. The soccer team, as you all know, had a rough past week because of recent events that happened with someone that was really close to them, but they wanted to thank the LHS soccer teams for coming to support them at their game on Friday. It meant a lot to them and to the program as a whole. We're one district and being able to support each other during times like this is really important to the students and the coaches and everyone in our community, so we just wanted to thank them for that. Best Buddies prom was this Saturday and it was a huge success. Jessica, one of the special needs students, said that she had a really fun time being with her friends and getting to dress up in a pretty dress. I wanted to say congratulations to Bobby Black for winning the Marine Band Concerto Competition on February 24th. Bobby was one of five finalists who performed their concerto in Washington. And it wasn't just high school students that performed, actually. It was out of anyone and agents, so that really just shows how talented he is. And on top of a monetary award, he will perform again with the president's own band on March 25th back in Washington. Lauren Cosson, freshman, is a part of the synchronized skating team through the Skokie Valley Skating Club. Her synchronized skating team won first place at the US synchronized skating competition held in Portland, Oregon. And we wanted to say congratulations to the VH Fall varsity athletic teams that qualified for the IHSA Team Academic Achievement Awards. These teams achieved a cumulative grade point average of 3.0 or higher during the season last semester, and that was boys cross-country, girls cross-country, boys and girls golf, boys soccer, girls swimming and diving, girls tennis, and girls volleyball. Congratulations to the Vernon Hills History Bowl team for their fifth-place finish at the state tournament and qualifying for the national tournament to be held in DC. Qualifying team members are Heiden, Grishen Stein, Jackson Knijznik, David Leschner, Lauren Less, and Jacob Slaw. And also qualifying for the individual competition history meeting was David Leschner and Lauren Less.
VHHS Student School Board Representative Hiba Ahmed.
Congratulations to girls Trevin Field who won their indoor conference title. Lauren Katz had a personal record of 2 minutes and 18 seconds for the 800 meter. Abby Hines won the indoor pole vault with a school record of 10 feet. The Vernon Hills High School Muslim Students Association is hosting its second annual Cultures of the Song event that will happen this Thursday in this room. It's open to the community and will have various different cultural foods and will be selling artwork from our students as well as in like jewelry pieces. And basically the purpose of it is to educate the community about the difference between culture and religion. We also had a school walkout on March 14th where it was all student-led and there were about like 400 to 500 students who showed up. We honored the victims of the Parkland shooting and we had six minutes of silence. For VH Gear, we had our second-to-last VH Gear Video of the Year with the theme Respect Your Perspective Community. Various ambassadors of the club went out into the community to perform random acts of kindness such as giving away cookies and leaving encouraging notes on students' cards. For the activism fair, congratulations to the winners. We had Poverty in Haiti for first place, Femicide in Mexico for second place, and third place was access to clean water in Cape Can. As a community, we raised more than $1,300 through sophomore student council's classroom fundraiser and the activism fair. This will be shared among the top three groups chosen for activities. Math team won first place at regionals and the team will compete at the state tournament on May 5th at the University of Illinois. And in Top Cougar, Luis Catalon took the crown.
LHS Student School Board Representative Lola Kinloday.
So for LHS and academics, the Y's team took second at regionals and senior Katie Stanky and Siraj Rajendran are headed to state in April, which is really exciting. The math team also placed second at regionals and 15 LHS students received honors on the national German exam. As a gold medalist, junior Richard Rush represented LHS at the Northern Illinois Chapter Interviews for a four-week study scholarship in Germany this summer, which is really exciting as well. FCC LA team received honors at third competition and all the students are eligible to compete in the state competition. Eliza Dabinski received a gold medal and most outstanding in fashion apparel display. The LHS Language Department celebrated International Language Week, finishing up on March 2nd when all the language classes watched presentation from Scottish dancers. This week, the English department has organized Writers Week where LHS students are able to hear both student and professional writers of poems, songs, short stories, and more. So yeah, this started just today and it's really cool. So for the walkout, we also did the walkout and this past Wednesday on March 14th at 10 o'clock, around 500 LHS students walked out of their second period class in solidarity to protest gun violence in school. Speeches were given and 17 balloons were released to memorialize the 17 lives taken in Parkland shooting. And we also had a six-minute moment of silence to symbolize how long the shooting was. Also, one of our photos made it on the Boston Globe website, which was really exciting. I participated and helped plan the walkout and it was truly inspiring in then and I'm so happy that I could have been part of this unifying movement. Additionally, German students met the Holocaust survivor Magda Brown. So on Monday, March 5th, the LHS advanced German class had the privilege of meeting Holocaust survivor Magda Brown and hearing her experiences of surviving Auschwitz-Bergenau during World War II as a teenager. Additionally, senior Sophie Richardson is a candidate for a Student of the Year campaign to support the leukemia and lymphoma society. LHS senior Sophie Richardson is a candidate and she's participating in the Student of the Year campaign. She's seeking support for her effort to help LLS ensure access to curies and treatments for blood cancer patients.
LHS Student Madison Kerber.
In LHS Athletics, boys volleyball has their first game today, so we're sending a good look to Zachary who's playing tonight. The boys basketball team ended their season on March 6th as sectional semifinalists against Lake Zurich. They had a really great season, everyone was super hyped for, and that also ended, marked the end of the cheer season. Drew Peterson on the basketball team was named the Illinois Basketball Coaches Association First Team All-State, which is a big honor. And then John Steinhaus went to state to Peoria on Thursday for, because he hit 12 out of 15 in the IHSA three-point contest. And Fine Arts is part of Youth Art Month. More than 100 works of art by LHS students were displayed at the art show at Dance Center North on March 2nd and then the One Act Plays were this weekend. John Underwood came last week and he is a, he has like coached dozens of Olympic athletes, so he's very experienced in health and wellness. And he came to speak at LHS last week. There was an optional assembly during seventh and eighth period and he talked to students about like basically improving your health overall. So this included healthy diet, sleep patterns, and effects of drugs and alcohol and smoking. I didn't get to go this past week, but I got the honor of seeing him in late classes this summer, so I can attest that the information is like very useful and relevant to our lives and it's a great experience and a great talk to see. So I'm happy that he was able to come to LHS. And then lastly, on February 26th to March 2nd, LHS Best Buddy celebrated Spread the Word to End the Word Week. So this is a week-long campaign devoted to ending the use of the R-word in like day-to-day speech. Best Buddies brought in comfort dogs for students to enjoy and had guest speakers throughout the week. LHS's own Peter Danklestone shared his story with students during lunch periods on Thursday and March 1st.
All right, great job everybody. Thank you for that. Okay, next, superintendent's report.
Superintendent Brentis Lee. We're going to roll into this extensive superintendent's report. Actually, I think it'll move along pretty quickly. Some additional good news to share. Vernon Hills High School Band Director Randy Sundell was elected to the American Band Masters Association, ABA, at this month's ABA Annual Convention in Fort Worth, Texas. The American Band Masters Association was founded in 1929 with John Philip Sousa named lifetime president. Since its inception, the ABA has been responsible for the development of the most prominent, the most prominent journal for band teaching and has become the Hall of Fame of the band world. So lecture requires a nomination from a current member of ABA as well as a member review of nearly a decade of performance recordings. Currently, less than 10 band directors from the state of Illinois at both the high school and collegiate levels have been selected as members of the ABA. This distinction recognizes the outstanding achievements of Randy and the students in the VHHS Band Department over the entire history of the school. Randy's selection for the ABA also cements him as one of the foremost instrumental music educators in the United States. That's very precedence of congratulations to Mr. Sundell. Libertyville High School students Siraj Rajendran and Katie Stanky qualified for state finals in the Illinois Academic Challenge. As the students mentioned earlier, the Y's team competed at the sectionals earlier this month where Siraj qualified for state in both Biology and Chemistry and Katie qualified in English. Both will represent LHS in state finals at the University of Illinois on April 17th. The team is coached by Pete Johnson and Dave Kreutz. Earlier this month, the LHS Jazz Ensemble and Jazz Lab Band performed at the Mondeleine High School Jazz Festival. Lab Band received a clinic from Chicago saxophonist and Elmhurst College Professor Mark Colby and Jazz Ensemble received a clinic from UIC Jazz Professor and LHS among us, Chris Mattson. Both ensembles had great performances and they both earned Division I ratings. The LHS Science Olympiad took home a third-place trophy overall and earned a bid to stay. At the March 10 College of Lake County Regional Science Olympiad Tournament, individual medals were earned in the following events. Varsity medals in Anatomy and Physiology in second, Mason Manilov and Desai Neyar. Experimental Design in fourth was George Legan and Jenna Okeltree and Siraj Rajendran. Fermi Questions in second, Siraj Rajendran and Cooper Miller. Forensics in first, Tara D'Souza and CJ Allen. Gameon, sixth, Matthew Wong and Anika Mizra. Helicopters, first, George Legan and Tara D'Souza. And Herpetology, second, Matthew Wong and Emily LeVito. Hovercraft, two, Maggie Schutz and Jenna Okeltree. And Micromission, fourth, Siraj and Mason Manilov. And Mission Possible, fifth, Maggie Schutz and Jenna Okeltree. Mousetrap Vehicle, third, George Legan and Tara D'Souza. Thermodynamics, in sixth place, Jenna Okeltree and Siraj. And in Towers, third, CJ Allen and Sunitra Kanan. JB Medals in Disease Detectives, second, Kathryn Yin and Alana Navsker. Experimental Design, in third, Derek Joseph and Brian Hong and Melissa Lukic. And Fermi Questions, second, Ben John, John and Brian Hong. Forensics, third, Kathleen Jen and Julia Fryrare. Herpetology, in second, Anne Lee and Emma Soderstrom. Optics, third, Ben John and Nathan John. Rocks and Minerals, second, Emma Soderstrom and Melissa Lukic. And Thermodynamics, second, Ben John and Derek Joseph. And Write It, Do It, in third place, Alana Navsker and Kathleen Jen. Several LHS FCC LA team members earned honors for their performances at the area competition at Harper College on February 23rd. Students coached by Loretta Lordan and Kristen Tarrant received the following honors and are eligible to advance now to state competition. Gold Medal in Most Outstanding, Eliza Dabinski in Fashion Apparel Design. Silver Medal in Words, Josie Barnaby in Taylor Garment. Mackenzie Farrell in Semi Formal. Margot Lawless in Casual Wear. Kate Recker in Apparel Construction. Mackenzie Schutz, Apparel Construction. Sam Otto in Relestray. Jordan Ergal in Salads. And a Bronze Medal Award went to Mackenzie Calison in Apparel Construction. The District 128 Community Education Program received a 2017 Education Leadership Award from the GLMV Chamber of Commerce on Friday, March 2nd at the GLMV Annual Membership Recognition Gala. The award recognized the contributions that the program gives to the GLMV Chamber and the communities in the area that the chamber serves. Community Education Director Diane Phillips and Community Education Administrative Assistant Madeline Dieterich accepted the award on behalf of the district. So congratulations to everyone, as always, lots of good news. Next on the agenda tonight is just a brief follow-up to the students. We want to thank all of our students at both of the buildings on, for their roles in the March 14th walkout day. As has been indicated, a number of our students planned and participated in that activity and other two students chose to stay in the building. So whether the students went out to the walkout or they stayed in the building, instruction went out in the building and the students were allowed to peacefully protest and, as has been noted, did a great job with that. So we want to thank them. We also want to thank our students for their work with both of our principals, Dr. Gilliam and Dr. Pulentus, in making that day happen in a peaceful way and in the least disruptive way possible. We very much appreciated that and again, the respect that students were able to show for each other regardless of their position, march, not march, or in favor, not in favor during the lead-up to that march was very impressive. So we appreciate all of you as always and the leadership of the buildings and I think everyone did a great job that day. So thank you very much. Next on the agenda is safety and security and the Board is aware of this from some earlier communication, but just wanted to let our communities know that on Wednesday, March 21st, our District 128 School Safety and Security Teams, which are led by Assistant Principal Eric Moroschur at LHS and Assistant Principal Greg Stilling at Vernon Hills, will be working with safety staff and administrators from District 70 in Libertyville and District 73 at Hawthorne. We have about a two-hour kind of presentation sharing session during that day, which we're looking forward to being able to impart some of what we've learned and also learned from District 70 and 73. So that'll be, I think, a really nice day and a really beneficial day for the area as we work together to make sure that our students and our staff are safe at school. District 128 School's start time, this is kind of a regular agenda item for us again, but just want to remind everyone that coming out of committee work, inclusive committee earlier in the year, the committee made recommendations to the Board for an altered start time next year, meaning a later start time and an adjusted schedule. Components of that recommended schedule are subject to collective bargaining. We're currently in collective bargaining with our union and so that is obviously a topic of discussion that's ongoing with them. The way this will likely work is if we reach agreement on that subcategory, it becomes part of the larger agreement. So we'll have to conclude bargaining most likely before we can make kind of a final announcement on whether the schedule will be adjusted next year. Matt, is there anything you want to add to that?
I'm ready, very well.
Yeah, so we'll just keep reminding you because we are getting some phone calls and emails from parents and even students about that, so it's important to note that that conversation is continuing. The union is a full partner in that conversation and the conversations have gone well, but we need to conclude that as part of the broader collective bargaining process. Next on the agenda, LHS Pool Project Update. And Mark is actually at a village meeting, so just for the community, because we had a relatively mild winter this year, work has continued, short of that very cold week that we had in December, has really continued pretty much non-stop at the site. We did share some photos with the Board at the end of last week of pouring the bottom slabs for the deep end of the pool, so that's pretty exciting. Continuing to work on foundation and foundation walls and once some of that back work is done and all that detailed work over the course of the next few months, we're actually going to see that pool continue. And I think we're still on target for spring 2019 for possible openings. So the winter really helped us this year and hopefully the spring will be as cooperative. Next on the agenda, number six, 2018-19 IHSA Membership Renewal. Again, the IHSA for our communities is the Illinois High School Association and they govern athletics and competitive activities in the state. Once a year, we have to renew our membership in that group. So Pat, the administration would recommend that we renew our membership for Libertyville High School and Vernon Hills High School to the IHSA for the 2018-19 school year.
Okay, is there a motion to renew the membership of IHSA?
Some would.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call?
Backson.
Aye.
Hurdy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luth.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye. All right, motion carries.
Okay, next on superintendent's agenda tonight is FOIA requests and I'll take a moment to read those into the record. The first came from John Van Carty from Dean Foods in Franklin Park and requested electronic records for the 2017 bid for the school district's milk business. Follow-up was done by Dan Stanley and we respond on the deadline. The second request was 312 from Joan Michaels of the Vernon Hills Patch. Requested all non-exempt portions of all employee personnel files concerning Corey Beard, including but not limited to any letters of reprimand, salary records, any job descriptions and payment history information for any position held. Mr. Meadows indicates he would like to examine all non-exempt portions of partially exempt records and include exhibits and attachments where applicable. Bryant Kelly did the follow-up to that and Bryant, we request an exemption for that or did we respond?
That we respond.
Okay, so we responded on deadline. So those are our FOIA requests for this month.
What is exempt? Exempt from the FOIA reports or?
Personnel records under, go ahead, Bryant.
So it could be, so there could be stuff in the personnel records that are exempt from us sharing the FOIA sort of, and then some correspondence with, you know, attorney.
Yeah, I thought it was exempt from what we're required to.
No. So again, on our FOIA requests, we're always doing a full review with Len Hines, District, head of our District Council on FOIA, it's obviously before we respond. Okay. Next is donation acknowledgement and this is to the Goodman Family Foundation. We want to acknowledge a receipt of a $6,000 grant received from the Goodman Family Foundation in support of drug and alcohol prevention programs at Libertyville and Vernon Hills High School for the FY18 school year. The grant was received in two payments dated September 15, 2017, and the final payment was dated February 1, 2018. And we wish to thank them for their generosity in helping support our programs. So Pat, believe me, that is the end of the superintendent's report.
All right, thanks very much. Next, the consent vote agenda is listed. This is what we reviewed last month in committee. That's for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Hurdy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luth.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Program personnel, community chairperson.
Okay, we have the 2018-19 Ombudsman Contract and we are looking for six spaces at $6,337 each, which comes to $38,022 total. And because we're doing this a little earlier, we get a 2% discount. So we're looking for a motion to approve the contract as presented for the Ombudsman Program.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Huber.
Aye.
Luth.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Okay, next, we have word policies for a first reading and we've got Word Policy 2260, uniform grievance procedures. Policy footnotes, legal references, and craft references have been updated. There's new language in the filing of complaints subsection and clarifies for any complaint filed under this policy which alleges harassment, the complaint manager shall now process and review the complaint according to both policies. We have operational services, Policy 440, incurring debt. And again, the policy footnotes and legal references have been updated. Personnel, Policy 520, workplace harassment prohibited. And again, there are legal reference footnote and policy updated. The policy has been reorganized into the following subsections. Sexual harassment prohibited, making a complaint, whom to contact with, report or complaint, investigation process, enforcement, retaliation prohibited, and recourse to state and federal peer employment practice agencies. It's just like they kind of reorganized what the old policy said and updated it according to the latest laws. And we have general personnel policy 520, resolution to prohibit sexual harassment, and that is a new resolution. The State Officials and Employees Ethics Act was amended by PA 1054 and it requires us to adopt a resolution that establishes a policy to prohibit sexual harassment. And we have 5170, general personnel, and that has to do with copyright. And the policy and footnotes are updated in response to a recent court decision. So those are the policies that we have for the first reading. Do you have any questions about any of those? All right, then we will put them for next month for a second reading and adoption. And next, we have the annual staffing report.
Ellen, I'll do a quick review on that, okay, for us, and then Bryant can jump in. Obviously, the staffing process in the district is a very important process for teachers because it drives the majority of our staff cost. So that process begins with students making course requests in the middle of the year and concludes with freshmen, incoming freshmen making their request. Once we get those tallies, then John and Tom at their two buildings begin to look at those numbers and they begin to do some initial outline of sections. The department supervisors take that information and they work on it and then they bring it to a bigger table with the principals involved and they have discussions. And then the two principals join the district office team and we review all those numbers. We work very collaboratively to do that with the idea of meeting the needs of our students and also being mindful of staffing costs. The team has consistently done, you know, an excellent job of that. They did that again this year. And here is the summary of the staffing report that we shared with the Board at our P and P Committee meeting last Monday before we ask you to vote on that tonight. So in general education staff for FY19, we are up 2.9 FTE, that's full-time equivalency. It's about $295,800 estimate, estimation using an average teacher salary in the district. Again, those numbers are driven by more student requests and an increase in enrollment at Vernon Hills High School. Our special education staffing next year is up 3.7, that's about $377,400. And for folks that are not familiar with special education, that staffing is done all on a need base, basis, and it goes through a very copious and important process, working with students and their parents and the staff to meet student needs under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, which is a federal act. So those numbers are always driven by what our students need in the special education program. So total staffing, we are up 6.6 FTE, which is about $673,200 if you're using an average staff figure. So the summary would be our retirement replacement hires is roughly about $714,000. Increase in staffing requests is about $673,200. We mentioned those numbers earlier. And we will have likely- And we will have likely retirement savings from teachers retiring of about $944,097. And so our net staffing increase cost for next year, again, estimated at $443,103. And you will note that recouping those retirement savings, said simply, folks that retire have usually been in the field for a long time. They're at the top of their earnings. And then hiring staff back in and an average teacher cost or less once we've done all of our hybrids, so that's our estimate. In addition, we always ask the board for a 1.0 contingency FTE for our teaching staff and also a 1.0 FTE contingency for our support staff in the district. And that is part of our recommendation tonight, as we noted last Monday at the P and P committee meeting. That allows us to work with John and Tom in the event that we need to make some adjustments along the way. Let me give you an example. So let's say John has an additional 15 freshman students who walk in who all need Algebra I. We're already at a working optimum in the class size of the max, maximum number of desks we could put in a room, and we actually have to create another section. So that allows us to go ahead and work with John when John's made the case for that, and we've reviewed the numbers, which he would, and Tom would as well. Bryant tonight would review that request, and then if it was needed, we would grant it. Generally speaking, over the 10, 13 years I've been here, on an average, we probably use anywhere between .1 and .3 of that contingency during the school year. So it's really there to allow us to handle unusual circumstances in staffing without having to wait a month to come to the board to get that approval, which we would have to do. So that is really the summary of our report, just kind of restated again tonight for the board and our communities. And Ellen, we would recommend that we accept the staffing report as requested.
We have a motion.
I move to accept the staffing report as recommended.
Second. Any discussion?
Roll call, please.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batsen.
Aye.
Gruddy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Ellen, one, just one related note beyond the vote, again, for our communities who may not all be aware of this. But the district is growing again, particularly at the southern end of the district in Vernon Hills. John is up about 120 students over last year and this year. We'll have two more groups coming in, and we know that growth continues in District 73. So we know that growth is coming. We have a demographic study that we did about a year and a half ago, which would indicate that we are on kind of the most aggressive prediction track right now. 73 is as well. We are sharing our reports and their reports, and Nick Brown, the superintendent, and myself, and our two teams will continue to monitor that as we move forward because that has some implications for future planning for capital needs here in Vernon Hills. Okay, Ellen, sorry, just wanted to add that.
Okay, so then our next item is annual employment recommendations. So first, we want to approve the continuing employment of first, second, third, and fourth-year non-tenured faculty. Do we need a motion for that?
So moved.
Do we do all of one, two, and three together?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, and two, the honorable dismissal of non-tenured full-time faculty and the non-renewal of non-tenured part-time faculty. So we need a motion to accept that, the annual, the continuing, I'm sorry, the annual employment recommendations.
Chairperson Mauer waits for the motion.
I amend my motion, including these additional items.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batsen.
Aye.
Gruddy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next, we have the report for employment of employees, and we've got requests for reassignment, request for part-time status, certified request for full-time status, honorable dismissal of non-tenured full-time faculty, and some educational support personnel resignation. So we have a motion to approve the employment of employees report.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batsen.
Aye.
Gruddy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, and then under other, I have no other.
Yes.
All right, so done, we're concluded with that.
Thank you. Facilities and finance, Chairperson Batsen.
Okay, Dr. Gruddy, we have five bid awards here that we need to review and vote on. Should we do these, we should probably do them individually.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So up first is LHS Cladding and Roofing. Stuki Construction was the parent recommended contractor. Any further background on this?
Nope.
We reviewed it in committee last week, just last week. So if we can have a motion to accept the bid for the cladding and roofing network.
Make sure they mountain that.
Yeah, yeah.
Full team, full team, mountain. $598,000.
I make a motion that we accept Stuki Construction Company for $598,000 for the LHS cladding and roofing.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batsen.
Aye.
Gruddy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is Science Lab Renovations at Vernon Hills High School. The parent winner of this one, these were again reviewed in committee last week. This includes alternate one is the recommendation. So the base bid was $821,000. Alternate one was $43,700, so with a total of $864,700. So if we can have a motion, I'm sorry. FBG Corporation is the company that won that one.
I move to accept the bid of $864,700, is that correct? From FBG Corporation for the BHHS Science Lab renovations.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Have a roll call, please.
Batsen.
Aye.
Gruddy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Okay, that will passes. We have abatement work at Libertyville High School. The, it's formatted a little differently. This is ARC, is that the company? Yes. And the total there is $57,000. Did we do any alternates on this one?
No, but it's a basement with other variables depending on what they find. So it's the base bid plus the other variables as they come up.
Yeah, as they come up, okay. So that's ARC, environmental. So can we have a motion and a second for that one?
Can I make a base bid?
$57,000.
$57,000.
I make a motion that we accept the base bid of $57,000, the asbestos abatement, and the subsequent list of charges as they come up.
ARC.
ARC.
Second.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Again, this was reviewed in committee last week, so can we have a roll call, please?
Gruddy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batsen.
Aye.
So we have masonry work at Vernon Hills. And this is STR, S E G is the recommended contractor for this one. STR Building Resources.
They're a consultant, they were good at Grove Masonry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Yeah, Grove Masonry Maintenance, Inc. is the winner. The STR has worked with us to develop this bid. So it's $31,900 was the Grove Masonry bid. So can we have a motion?
I move to accept the bid from Grove Masonry for $31,900, what, $31,900 for the BHHS masonry bid.
Second.
Okay, any questions, comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batsen.
Aye.
Gruddy.
Aye.
Okay, and last but not least, some hardscaping work at Vernon Hills High School. A parent bidder is All-Star Asphalt with a bid of $53,700 on this. We have a motion for this? All-Star Asphalt.
I move that we accept the bid from All-Star Asphalt for $53,700 for the BHHS hardscaping improvement.
Second.
Thank you.
We're a life group today.
Yes, we are. We're just cruising through this. Any comments, questions? Again, for the audience, we reviewed all of these in committee, so we're aware of what's going on here. Can we have a roll call, please?
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batsen.
Aye.
Gruddy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Motion passes. Last but not least, we have the 2017 CAFER, which is a comprehensive annual financial report. This was sent to all board members. I read every page. No, I didn't. I read 100 of them.
Very comprehensive.
Very comprehensive. When they say comprehensive, this is comprehensive. Very nice job, and a tremendous amount of work for Mr. Stanley and the crew. So thank you very much for doing that. Just need a motion for approval.
I make a motion that we approve the 2017 CAFER.
Second.
Okay, any comments, questions?
I have questions.
I was hoping you'd look at it. I was looking at you just.
He's got pages, he knows.
No, I crossed off a lot of them.
No, it's good.
There's a lot of information.
Like a good item.
That's why you're here.
No. So one of the big things, if you could do me a favor, it's on page 17 of the CAFER. So I'll let you get there. And again, it's just an information purposes only, so... Because there's always a lot of discussion about how much money and how much cash the district has, and you hear all these numbers that could most likely be a little bit inflated. So I want you to walk me through the net position at the very bottom on page 17 of the CAFER. It starts with the net position section.
Sorry.
No. Because I think this is actually, and actually I want you to start with $193 million of our net position, and really explain what that is.
You mean page 17 of the CAFER, like at the bottom of the page it says number 17, not?
Yeah.
And it says $193,754,37.
Because again, I think for the public, that is in essence what they would consider their net worth. How much am I worth? And this, in essence, is 193.7. But that includes our land, that includes our buildings. So I'd like you to kind of just break that down so we all know what exactly that is.
So of the 193 million, that really is an accrual base trying to account for everything, including our capital assets. 80 million of that, of the 193 million is in investments in capital assets, like the buildings and things like that, the equipment that we have inside the buildings that we are accounting for. So that's going to be, so meaning when you spend money on capital, that gets converted into a capital asset. So that's going to be reported there and takes into account depreciation and such over the lifetime expectancy of the item. So it's a big list that gets updated and worked on. The remaining funds.
So that takes us down to 113, right? So, okay.
And so the remaining funds are largely unrestricted, but they're in, they're separate, they're in, they're restricted to the purposes for which they were gathered for. So there's operations and maintenance money in terms of about $35 million. That's restricted for those purposes, which would include the pool, for example. That's one example of money to be used. Debt service, so there's money from outstanding, there's money that's reserved for debt purposes for 4.5 million. Now that you don't have any more debt to pay for, you could potentially use that money for future debt, but there's also other, there's other things you could do with that money. Now that you no longer have debt, it's kind of a rare circumstance that you find a district that doesn't really have any kind of bonded debt. So usually, they're using those funds to do that, but you're not in that position. So there's some flexibility you could do that we could explore in the future.
So again, just to be clear, restricted for ONM can't really spend. It's already kind of been spent for ONM. I mean, it's going to be spent, things of that nature. It's really not at this board's whim to go and spend that 35 million.
It can only be spent for operations and maintenance purposes.
It's not committed funds.
It's not committed.
Yeah, so it's available, it's only available for certain purposes.
Okay.
Correct, yeah. So then similarly, student transportation, so 2.3 million is reserved, is restricted for student transportation uses. Retirement benefits, that would include, that's 4.7 million, that would include costs such as I R F contributions we have to make, payments to FICA, Medicare, and such for our employees. Toward immunity, so those are toward purposes such as property casualty insurance and things like that for what those purposes could be used. And then there's the unrestricted 65 million that's largely going to be in our net fund. And there's, and because it's considered your general fund, there's nothing restricted really on the use of those money. So those monies could be used for operations that you use for capital projects. And so that's going to be the biggest bulk of what we have. So that's where you have flexibility in how you want to use those funds. So that would really, I guess, break down to 193 billion. If that answers your question.
It does. So again, we start at the 193, we get rid of the 80, so right there, we're at 113. So if we hear that we have 120 million to spend or we think it's bad nature, that's not necessarily truth. I mean, it's, we can't get to that number really from.
But look at page 21. So if you go to 21 and you start at the 190, it adds up to the 193. So what, the 80?
Correct, yeah. So that's a great, that's a great page. And what that does, that page basically takes us from our modified accrual basis of accounting all the way to full accrual. So our books are held, are held at modified accrual, and our reporting is done modified accrual. And then they translate that into the CAFER to full accrual. This is the page that shows you how do you get from the number on the bottom of one report all the way up to the full accrual method. And so that gives you a lot of really, really helpful information. So really, if you're looking at the balance, the fund balances, cash in the bank at June 30, yes, you have 119 million that's in the bank. But the note that we want to make aware of is that we get largely a lot of your property taxes come in May and June, and so you have that influx. And so this year, I want to say it was around 35 to 38 million dollars. Of that money is really from early taxes. And so a lot of that money is intended to be used really for the next year. And so to think that you have 119 million available to use for quote-unquote whatever you want is not accurate. You really should remove that from the equation because that's, so that'll get you back down to about, I think about 80 million or so is the range of what I would recommend to you as available resources for you to use for.
Of which we've committed about 20 million more.
Exactly, yes.
So we're really, yes, high level at a 60 million.
So again, we're down to 60 potentially. And it's always safe to us, it's not safe to assume, but a good policy or good prudency says we should have something set aside, some percentage of our expenses set aside that we don't spend because something could happen.
Correct.
That we need to, and what, just kind of remind me again what we, what we're trying to, what that number should be.
Yeah, well, we talked about the fund balance policy before. ISB, it depends at different levels. ISB will rank, will give you a lower financial strength rating if you have less than 25%. They also, if you don't have at least 180 days cash on hand, they will again rate you with a weaker financial strength.
But I also want to make sure it's very clear that we've had numerous extensive discussions as it's related to the amounts. How much we should have for the rainy day, that we should have as a good business, good school, good public citizen practice. And then furthermore, we've had numerous conversations as it relates to what is in reserves for key capital projects. So we do not have to go back to the taxpayer to ask for additional funds for those capital projects. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
And if we run down our reserves, are bond rating not suffered?
Part of your bond rating will include the reserves that you have.
Okay. I appreciate Kevin bringing it up because this is an extensive report. We should all read it inside and out and note because this also becomes available to the public. And public obviously has an interest in what this is because their tax dollars are part of what goes into this, everything that goes into this. And want to make sure there's full understanding because to the points that were made, somebody might walk away with the wrong idea of an amount that's on here is usable for something that it's not. Based off of what they're reading or timing assumptions or those type of things. So it's good to have that understanding and state it. So thank you. Thanks for bringing it up.
No, again, I think it's just very important because the fund balance is just such a vital, it's easy to explain in terms of, it's like a net worth. And if we break down the pieces of it, it's excellent. And plus, I think if you looked at the net worth statement, we've been investing in capital. If you would see the capital, it's been trending significantly up, which again, is another prudent thing, you should be investing in capital, so. Next question for you, and then again, I only have a couple more. And this is an easy one. Why isn't the pool considered assigned? I know we can do certain things with fund balances, we can, you know, we can restrict it, but again, you can assign it. And based upon the budget that we passed and things of that nature.
And then there's cement and ground.
Yeah, I mean, could we not, at that point, when we pass that budget, really kind of assign that so that the report would have been a little bit clearer with the path for the pool? And again, I don't know, this is your, you're the expert at this one, I'm certainly not, but I think we could have assigned it.
You, so I'm not the expert on the assigning and committing of funds, but in general, because I got here after July first, those funds weren't, I believe, officially assigned or committed before June thirtieth. And so a lot of that stuff happened, even though you had talked about it and everything, a lot of that stuff was even ongoing through the summer. So as of June thirtieth, there wasn't anything official to commit those funds. I think it's definitely something to look at doing for this year that we can take a look at to make sure we reflect that for this fiscal year.
Yeah, again, just, we all know the pool's such a big expense, it'd be nice to really kind of see.
That's a good question, but I think we didn't take any formal action until after June thirtieth. So since this was a snapshot at the end of the year, it probably wasn't included, but I agree, I think it should be reflected somehow on there.
So go to page one thirteen of the CAFER. So the good news is we're on page one thirteen, so.
I'm betting there's a hundred and sixty-three.
Yeah, good.
Yeah.
No, so, okay, so the big thing I want to make sure, for clarification, if somebody's looking at this under expenditures, and they look at two thousand sixteen, sixty-two point six in instruction, and then it jumps to seventy-three point five in instruction. I want to make sure that we're very clear, that is not, teachers did not get a huge raise. What that is, I believe, is the increase of the pension cost that we are fully subsidized or fully reimbursed, I should say, fully reimbursed by the state, it's a wash. So I think ten point five million of that is an increase in the TRS contribution that the state in essence covers, it's kind of a financial wash. Is that true?
Correct, yeah, it's nothing that flows with our books, so it's really kind of an accounting note to account for. So we don't, so based on certain parameters, there, there's a different rate, a percentage rate that is considered on behalf contributions that TRS theoretically contributes on behalf of the district every year. And so that gets reflected as a revenue and then equally as an expenditure. So you'll see also an increase in state aid of about that same ten million. We didn't get ten more million dollars from the state, it's just an accounting note to reference that. So there was a big change in the state on behalf, largely that, a big part of that was the percentage change that we have no control over. We don't have any control over that number. So again, if that percentage number changes for the next year, you could see, you could see a change there as well. But any kind of change that happens like that will be noted, for sure.
No, and again, I think, I just want to make sure we're very clear that that by no means is a significant increase in the pay of our valued employees. I mean, they certainly received a fair raise, but they certainly, that, that could, again, if you take it in a piece, that could certainly be misleading. But I thank you for point of revenue because I think that actually, it's a wash. And finally, on page one forty.
Board member Huber looks through the CAFER.
And that's the operating cost per, per people. How does that compare to our peers? Because again, that's another number that people will focus on, write extensive things about. Could you help us understand that number?
Yeah, I'd have to pull the other numbers to tell you how does that compare to our peers. But my general understanding is probably is the range of what our peers are in. But I'd have to pull that data, I don't know if that data is readily available for you.
What does that mean? Explain what that number means.
But it is available on each school district's official school report card, it tells you, it will tell you.
And in the CAFER as well.
Yeah, and there too, but I mean, it's, you know, you can kind of, that report card is an easy document to just look at.
Some districts don't do a CAFER, but they have an annual report that they do that's consistent that I have, I can access and pull those up really quick.
Okay.
But that's essentially...
Can we just maybe talk about the next, maybe at the next committee meeting, could you just kind of...
Sure, yeah. But on a thirty thousand foot scale, that's essentially how much it costs us to run everything that we're running.
And that includes certain things too, right?
For sure, that's meant to operate, operating, and it's meant to focus on, so it's going to take out a lot of...
Capital.
A lot of, yeah, capital and other odds and ends things that we do as an organization that don't necessarily involve our day-to-day operations and education.
Sorry, but CAFER, CAFER, it would be apples to apples, right?
Correct, this is, this is a number that even if a district doesn't do a comprehensive annual financial report, they do an annual financial report called an AFR, and that's consistent throughout, and that would be the same number that's used for consistency.
Well, let's put it together, the same peer group of schools that we're looking at.
Yeah, absolutely.
And there are some appearances within that group, so for example, if you have a multi-high school district, your operating cost per student might be higher because you've got to of everything, right?
Absolutely. I think that's important to note.
Yes, it is. And yet, the community a number of years ago went through a vigorous debate for a long period of time of whether we should have one mega high school, à la Stevenson, or maybe a Warren, or a two-school campus. And that decision was made, a referendum was passed to support that. But in a two-school district, if you compare this to Lake Forest example, they have one principal. We have two principals because we have two schools. So you can kind of go right down the line. So we have two physical plans here.
Huge.
You know, right. So, you know, you've got, everything is doubled as a result of that. And I think when the community, you know, went through that debate, they certainly looked at those issues, but looked at the value of having two smaller schools versus a mega school and the opportunities that it provided students. And historically, if you look back at the district since the time Vernon Hills was opened, it's certainly not that. So that's a, you know, that's a point to make, I think.
So thank you, sorry to...
No, it's good.
Yeah, I apologize, I would have gotten questions beforehand.
Those are great questions, great questions, thanks for asking.
Anything else, anyone else have any questions or comments? So we'll review that in more detail at our next committee meeting, that's great. Okay. You need a roll call?
We need approval for it, don't we? Yes, yeah.
Wunstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Banson.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luz.
Aye.
Wunstead.
Aye.
Great, CAFER passes. Anything under other?
Jim, just two quick things, just to, this has been mentioned several times tonight, Scott did a nice job of highlighting that again. Periodically, remind our communities that this board does its really deep dives and deep work in committees. And we welcome to the public any of those committee meetings when we have them, both the program and personnel committee and the facilities and finance committee meet on the same night. Generally speaking, if you look at the board's schedule, with a few exceptions during the year, the committee meetings are at Liberty Bell High School and the board meetings are here, but you're always welcome. But, you know, we do very deep and thorough discussions, particularly on very complex issues. So we always invite you into that discussion before we get to the board table and we actually make a recommendation. And then the board goes through the approval or not approval process here. And then Pat, before we leave F and F, you want to make a comment, a couple of comments on the tour that we took of John Lutson at Vernon Hills High School?
Yeah, so last Monday, all of us took a tour of Vernon Hills High School as part of a comprehensive review of the Vernon Hills High School facilities. And we're in a really rigorous process of evaluating the impact of some of the growth that we're seeing on the southern part of the district and its impact on these facilities. And we're looking at classroom space, we're looking at space for physical education, we're looking at support services space and, you know, any of a variety of different facilities. So it was a great tour, good chance to really see all the different parts of the buildings. And over the next couple of months, we'll be reviewing that and making some decisions with respect to what we need to do to meet the long-term needs of the Vernon Hills residents.
And again, if we, if we make those recommendations and the board concurs with those recommendations, the funds for those projects will come from the reserves that we were talking about earlier tonight. The board will want to make that decision, but that's been a conversation on any of our major capital projects. It would certainly be that conversation for anything that we would need to and then do at Vernon Hills High School.
Great.
All right, anyone else? No? All right, no property, no seed all, no, you said read by ISB.
Yeah, I have just a brief, just for those who couldn't make it, I attended last Wednesday the Illinois Association of School Boards Lakes Division meeting, was held at Mudline High School. And I had two very strong takeaways from that, it was a very, very well-attended, extremely great program. We got a tour of Mudline's new STEM building, it's a very fine new facility that they opened up, I believe, about a year ago. But we had a conversation earlier, talking about some renovation of some science classrooms here. And the question came up, you know, the building's not that old. I would suggest if anyone wants to see, and I'm not suggesting this is what we're doing, but if anyone wants to see what a modern science, really effective science facility looks like at a high school level. They have very, very fine facilities there, recently built, and it was just an amazing tour of that facility. They had some students taking us around, much like our students, very articulate and able to show us that. So that's one takeaway, really sort of put a picture in my mind of what Dr. Fisher was trying to explain verbally at our last meeting. So there's, I may have a link or something I can send out to the board if you'd like to see that, there's some photos and whatnot. The other takeaway was Dr. Schuler, the superintendent from District two fourteen, gave the, sort of the presentation. And his presentation was on redefining ready. And for those who aren't familiar with that particular initiative, his focus was looking at how we define students readiness for college. And all the work that they're doing and some of that work, working with Harper College in addressing what is truly, what is a student ready for college? What is readiness, how do we measure that? And for many people, it's just a score and a test, but he, you know, discusses many other ways to maybe define what is readiness. What is a program that they have here, they call the Power of Fifteen, where they do a dual credit program with their local community college, Harper. Where a student graduates with fifteen credits in a dual credit, so it's an actual credit from a college. Similar in rigor maybe to AP, but it's a different way that they actually have transfer from a college. And that by doing that, those students have twice as the likelihood of graduating with a degree, a college degree, if they come out of high school with those fifteen credits. So some interesting work, and it was just an eye-opening, actually update for me on what that, the work that they're doing at two fourteen. So it was just, I just wanted to share that. I know we're long into many of those kinds of thoughts as well, so I think it's relevant for us and it was just good to see other districts working on things like that.
Great, thanks for going, Jim. All right, can I ask for a motion to convene an executive session? Again, the topic is collective negotiating matters, five ILCS one twenty slash two C two. So Luke, sir, second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Banson.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luz.
Aye.
Wunstead.
Aye.